Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, March 22, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So for this council meeting, we'll be implementing the Governor's Executive Order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows councilors to participate remotely. All votes will be via roll call. There are two public hearings, and I will go over the process for participating before we get to Agenda Item Number Two. There are 26 items on this evening's agenda. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance, please.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present in chamber.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby is present.
Lieutenant President, sir.
Okay. All councils are in attendance or on remote. I will now ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes, City Council Meeting, March 8, 2021.
Counselor Tenera. Motion to approve, please.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the meeting minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Roby votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the meeting minutes is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Okay, so we now have two public hearings. I'll go over the rules for the public hearing before we get started. Please keep your computer or your phone muted when not speaking. Unmute to speak and mute when finished speaking. And if you're calling in via phone, you want to unmute by pressing star six. But just like if the public was in the chamber, please be respectful while waiting for your turn to speak. The system does not work when everyone tries to speak at once. We will do our best to give each individual the opportunity to speak. Please be patient. Do not watch the meeting on TV. There is a delay. Your remote access capability is real time. Should there be technical issues, we will recess and determine if they can be corrected. And then at the conclusion of the public hea— both public meetings, the council will recess and the system will be cleared of participants, so the council will continue with the remainder of the agenda. So with that, I will ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for special permit from Calverde Naturals LLC to operate an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 239 Boston Post Road West, Order Number 21-108214.
Thank you. So again, reminder, this public hearing, they're conducted in four stages. The public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant; questions from the public; public speaking in opposition; and then questions from the city councilors. And then I would ask any member of the public speaking to please state their name and address for our record. So with that, we'll open the first part of the public hearing, which is the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton, with offices at 161 Worcester Road, Framingham. Here tonight to speak to you about Calverde Naturals in their special permit and site plan application before you for the adult-use marijuana retail establishment. We have—thank you for putting the visual up on the screen. That's fantastic. We have several members of the project team that are on the line. Some of them will speak directly to you, and some are here in the event that questions arise that they can particularly answer. So first, I will just give you a quick rundown of who's on the line. Randy Moran from Bowler Engineering, the civil engineer on the site, responsible for, you know, site design, utilities, and the like, and he will be speaking with you in just a few moments. And Kelly and Steve Tomasello are the Calverde Naturals representatives. Kelly's the president and CEO of this woman business enterprise. She and her husband, Steve, have been involved in the industry for some time, and Kelly will speak with you in a few minutes about her experience and the brand and the company, and she'll be very impressive. You'll enjoy hearing from her. We'll also have on the line Michael Allen, who's the chief of security. Michael's resume is very impressive, with over 30 years of being a chief of police, and other accomplishments, which we'll show you on his bio in a minute. Additionally, we have on the line from Hayes Engineering, who did the traffic impact report, Tony Capachetti from Hayes Engineer. And I believe we also have a representative or two from RK Center, who is the landlord and operator of this retail plaza. I'm sure is known to you. So with that, I'll introduce you to Kelly.
Hi. I'm Kelly Tomasello. We have a proposed site at Boston Post Road. I am the president and CEO of Calverde. A very woman-owned business, thrilled to bring our brand to the city of Marlboro.
Kelly, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
Yeah, so Kelly, you seem to be breaking up a little bit. I'm not sure if you're too close or far away from the microphone. If you could just try it again.
Is that any better?
Sounds good. That sounds good. That sounds better.
Okay, sorry, I'm gonna have to hold it close. So, sorry for the close-up. So would you like me to start over?
Sure.
Okay, so Kelly Tomasello, we're proposing Calverde at 239 Boston Post Road. I'm the president and CEO of Calverde Naturals, proud to be a woman-owned business, and I'm thrilled for the opportunity to bring our vision and brand to the city of Marlboro. Our priorities mainly are to be a positive impact on the community and operate our dispensary in a safe and compliant manner, and we thank you for the opportunity. We're thrilled to be considered.
Thanks. Thanks, Kelly.
Sure.
So again, you know, we're here for, you know, permits to operate the adult-use marijuana establishment facility. I consider this what I call an infill development. This is an existing retail plaza, as I'm sure you're quite familiar. This particular parcel, which Randy will describe in a minute, sits adjacent to the existing Chipotle restaurant, and there's a green area now there that is proposed for this particular project. Prior to this project, this area was approved for some 7,500 square feet of retail, and this facility that you see on the screen and as proposed is around 2,800 square feet of a standalone retail establishment. So, you know, we've put a lot of materials together, which were part of your application. Certainly, there's some criteria for the special permit, which I won't go through line by line with you unless you want me to. So at some point, we can start to talk about what those items are, but just to highlight, the application does comply with the regulations of not being within 500 feet of an existing public or private school or education facility, and same-distance exclusive of any daycare centers. So just to point out that, you know, this is compliant with those regulations, and this is—the application is in line with your ordinance, which allows in this business district, by special permit and with site plan review, this particular use. So Randy's got some details for you on the site, and I'll let him take it away.
Yep. Thank you, Todd. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Randy Moran with Bowler. As Todd had mentioned, we have some graphics in front of you, and I'll just kind of quickly go through some of these. This is basically our vision for the project at the end here, showing it situated within the existing shopping plaza. And Steve Kerrigan, is it possible to kind of flip through? Yep, and I think Kelly kind of hit on some of these, and Todd did. We'll miss—yep, yep. I think you can kind of flip through these, Steve. Thank you. There we go. And yeah, and just to give you—oh, there we go, Steve. Thank you. Just to give you kind of just a brief overview, we—in terms of where we've been thus far, we did meet informally with the Site Plan Review Committee a couple of times, and we did get Priscilla's and Jeff Cook's okay to move forward with our special permit, which is now in front of you folks. And obviously, provided we do get your approval on this, we would then go back in front of the Site Plan Review Committee for our formal application. And as Todd had kind of mentioned, you know, it's an adult-use marijuana establishment, 2,800-square-foot building. You'll see in the next couple of slides the secured loading and delivery area, as well as some of the parking spaces that exist within the center. The project itself should be a big benefit to the city, as well as the community, up to 20 jobs, as well as the 3% of the sales revenue going to the city and the increased tax benefits. Steve, could we flip to the next slide? Thanks. Yep, and this is the site here. I think everybody's familiar with it. Right on Route 20, the Apex Facility is across the street. This image aerial in front of you is, I think, a little bit outdated. It actually shows the Apex. It looks like it's under construction, which we know was a little while ago. But the site is across the street from the Apex Facility, and you can see it's really part of an existing shopping plaza. There's like a leveled-off area that's current, and as Todd had mentioned, it was previously approved by the city for a 7,500-square-foot retail building. And of course, now we're proposing a 2,800-square-foot retail building. Can you flip to the next one, Steve? And this is just another graphic showing you the site in relation to 495 and as well as Route 20. And then this one here, this is the proposed site plan, dropped onto an aerial image, and you can see this new 2,800-square-foot building, how it kind of fits into the plaza here. For the most part, we're really just maintaining a lot of the parking spaces and access driveway aisles that exist on the site today. There is, in total here—excuse me—we're proposing some parking spaces in front of the building, as well as some ADA—there's an ADA compliant parking spaces. We're also proposing a new ADA-compliant walkway that connects to the sidewalk within Route 20. That was actually one of the comments that we received from the—when we had formally met with the Site Plan Review Committee meeting, to provide that ADA-accessible walkway from the building out to the sidewalk in Route 20. And a couple of things I wanted to just point out also is the driveway that loops around the building, that's actually just intended for loading and delivery vehicles. You can see in the back of the facility, in that, I guess, whitish area, that's where actually the secured loading and deliveries—yep, right in that area, yep. That's where the secured loading and deliveries would occur. It's proposed to be fenced in with an eight-foot-high fence. A delivery vehicle would simply just come in, open a gate, back out, and then exit out through that one-way driveway that kind of wraps around the building. And the driveway is intended to be just for loading and delivery vehicles. We're proposing to sign it with a couple of signs that actually indicate that. Beyond that, we are also proposing to—there's also, you know, new underground utilities, erosion controls, proposed service to the building. When we compare this plan in front of you to the previously-approved plan that showed the 7,500-square-foot building, there's actually a slight decrease in impervious areas. And when we met with the Site Plan Review Committee meeting, when we met with Mark—I'm sorry, Tom—the city engineer, Tom DePercio, he was okay with us taking the approach that we're decreasing impervious areas when compared to that previous plan that was approved. Hence, there'll be a reduction in stormwater runoff rates entering the system—entering the stormwater system that exists on-site today. And beyond that, I mean, that's generally just a brief overview of the site. Again, a lot of the site is really just—it's really just maintaining what exists today within the plaza in terms of the parking and driveways, and we're just really just putting that new building within that leveled-off pad site that exists today. And Steve, do you mind flipping to the next slide? Thanks. And this is just a floor plan showing you the building. There's the secured loading and delivery area in the back, along with just a plan showing the interior layout of the building. And that—I mean, that is generally it. Todd, I don't know if you want to add anything else on?
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Good overview on that. Just a few notes, just so people have it in mind. You know, there is a host-community agreement that was executed back in July of 2020. There was a community outreach conducted in August of 2020, and the CCC provisional approval was received in January of '21. And so, you know, we're before you for this step in the process. Just so you have an idea, should the project be fully permitted and in line, the construction is scheduled to start in Q3 of 2021 here, with the proposed opening, you know, maybe a little idealistic, but by the end of the year, or certainly in early 2022, as this is obviously new construction, and who knows how that goes sometimes. But that's the proposed schedule. Would note that the application does call out, you know, clearly, best practices are intended here in terms of safety and, you know, ID checking and the like. And again, Randy mentioned the secure areas that are necessary for the loading, unloading, and then storage of materials. So certainly, all of that is in line and a priority for the operator, as I'm sure it is for the folks listening in here to the presentation. So again, we did a little bit of a high-level overview. We're certainly happy to answer questions and bring in those members of the team that may be qualified to answer those questions. So, you know, that's the end of our formal presentation.
Right. Thank you, Todd. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Any other members of the public wishing to speak in favor? Any members of the public wishing to speak in favor? And again, to unmute your phone, it's star six. Any members of the public wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? And again, it's star six to unmute your phone, if you're on the phone. Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Next part is public speaking in opposition. Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the councilors? Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just see the slide again with the receiving area. I know you mentioned it's unique, and I guess it is unique. It's probably the first building we have that's kind of been an island by itself. So if we could throw that back up—the colored one, Steve, if you can. I could see you couldn't do anything better. Now, that fence is about eight feet high. There must be some type of gate going across there. Is that so?
That's correct.
And the only vehicle allowed in there will be the delivery truck?
That's—
Or whatever. I'm not sure what your supplies—how they come. Is it your own delivery? Do they come UPS? I mean, I'm not sure how they come. Can you answer that? I mean, you've got the best that you can do here, but I just, you know, I want to have a few—I have a few concerns.
I can answer if you'd like. It's—mainly, it would be—it's third-party delivery, and then that will also be our trash pickup. But essentially, those are the only vehicles that will be allowed inside.
Okay, trash pickup. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah. Now, the other thing—so, which is good. I mean, I think it is kind of unique, and you've got the fence there, and it must be locked when not being used. Now, as a driveway comes around, which is what you have to have, well, when you come out, if they—people take a right, is that going to Davey's building there?
That's correct. There's a drive—there's an existing driveway connection that ties into the Davis Company properties, yes.
And that's an opening there now. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Because you need that, because when you take a left, you know, with the restaurant there and the sub shop there and the nail, you know, that's kind of a small driveway getting out. So I think it's a plus that you can go onto that property there. I don't know if you need permission to do that or not. It's not a public way, but as long as—not so much the driveway around the building, but that people, when they're leaving there, they can take a right through Davey's property and then a left out by the Mexican restaurant there. That's all. I mean, it's—yeah, it's pretty good design, really. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Landers. Any other questions? Counselor Tenera.
I don't really have—thank you, Mr. President. I really don't have any questions. I'm just—I don't know, for the group that's presenting this, I'm the ward counselor for this area, so I have not heard any residents, any phone calls. So at this point, I guess we're gonna have to wait to see how it goes in urban affairs, and I may get phone calls from now between now and then. And when I do, I'm sure my constituents may have questions here and there, so we'll just be on the lookout. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tenera. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Couple of things. I'm a big fan of Chipotle, so I've been to that neck of the woods pretty often, and having the access to go eastbound from there through the current parking lot, it's easy to travel through that. You know, good luck in trying to get the building constructed in six months. That's one of the things. It's, you know, it's fresh construction, so I think that that's a challenge in and to itself. So, and I wish you the best with that, if we get approval with that. Just to clarify, this is not going to do medical marijuana. It will only be recreational, correct? And where are you going to be the source of the product? You're muted.
Kelly, do you want to take this one, or Steve?
Oh, sure. Yes, it's recreational, and it's third-party.
So you're effectively going to purchase it from the open market, so to say?
Essentially, we have a main, like proprietor, I guess you'd say, that we'll be sourcing probably 70% of our product from, but, you know, we want to keep on trend and be able to provide the best product for the city and our consumers and customers, so.
Sure, sure. First generation of, you know, dispensaries pretty much were seat-to-sale type. So I'm just curious to see how the industry's changing.
It is.
You know. And so you do have the provisional approval from the Cannabis Control Commission with this?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no intention of putting a drive-through with that road access, right?
No.
Good, okay. But—and the other thing is, do you know, as far as what the current industry trends are, as far as how many purchases are done in cash as a percentage?
I actually don't have the exact numbers. I would say the majority are actually done with debit card.
Okay.
I'm guessing it's probably less—or maybe around 30% cash.
Okay, okay.
Maybe lower.
Just as you were saying, it's only going to be trash pickup and deliveries. You will probably have the vault cars, you know, cars to do cash pickup coming into that area as well.
Correct, yep.
So I just want to make sure that's part of your—you know, part of your plan. But, you know, overall, I think—yes.
Armored cars. Armored cars, of course.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. First generation actually uses the armored cars to do delivery back in the day, two years ago. Okay. That's all the questions I have, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize if I've been in and out of this various web process. My actual browser, my web controller is not working too well. We've had some trouble with it lately with the Wi-Fi. But with that said, I believe I just heard questions on delivery operations in respect to delivery times. Has that been stipulated, the delivery times, and limited to certain hours?
Yeah, I can speak to that, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Mike Allen. I'm the chief of security, as I was introduced earlier. I was responsible for the development of the security plan for the facility. Part of that is covering the transportation of product and cash, both to and from the facility. So delivery times—I know there was a question earlier about the types of vehicles that are used for transportation of product. Any vehicle coming into the facility is coming in an unmarked vehicle. These vehicles have to meet all the security requirements of the CMR and the Cannabis Control Commission, so that—the regulations really dictate the times that these deliveries are made, which is randomized, times of the day, days of the week. We try to minimize any disruption in traffic with the deliveries by doing deliveries during off-hours. We try to do them during daylight hours, so there's good visibility. So the vehicles themselves, they have alarm systems in them, they're tracked by GPS. These are all requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission regulations.
Thank you for the answer, Mike. And as it relates to the actual type of service, will this be both medical and recreational?
Recreational only.
Recreational only, okay. And that's—the other questions I had were related to traffic patterns, which were asked by other city councilors. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Orem. Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for the presentation. It was very helpful and great to see, you know, beautifying this particular area and to see a woman-owned business. I might have a question regarding the online queuing system that was sort of in the description. I know there was some information provided about the traffic study, but I'd love to hear a little bit more about that in depth. So how is this online queuing system going to be used? Is that something that'll be used post-pandemic as well? And how do you see that impacting the traffic, since I know it says that no external, you know, outside queuing will be allowed? So I imagine people are, you know, making specific appointments to be able to show up, or can you speak to that a little bit more?
Do you want that, Kelly, or do you want me to respond to that?
Chief, if you don't mind responding right now.
Oh, I don't mind. So actually, we'll be doing both. We'll be offering pre-order, which is always encouraged, because that will certainly minimize the amount— the amount of customers actually queuing inside the facility. So every effort will be made to queue customers inside the facility, not outside. So if you look at the floor plan, the entry vestibule is fairly large in size, but particularly with COVID, limited to, you know, X number of customers in that, or a few customers in, in the vestibule. But what we essentially plan to do is queuing of customers will be done on the dispensary floor. So we'll, we'll construct a series of stanchions that will maximize that space and allow for queuing on the dispensary floor area. We have considered, if we get really busy, to implement an electronic queuing system for customers that we could, we could roll out, where similar to going to, you know, a restaurant that has the pucks that you would, you would be notified of when your time is. We would offer some type of a system where, or a system where we could actually text people, take their phone number and text them when there was space available in the facility, so they don't actually have to queue outside in our, in our parking area and disrupt customers or the neighboring businesses. So, so essentially, it's a combination of, of the texting system, if necessary, the online ordering, and, and just our regular queuing system inside the dispensary floor.
Thank you, Mike. That is very helpful to kind of hear that process in real time, because I can imagine that might be a concern to have, you know, lots of people obviously waiting and how to mitigate that. And my, my final question is around the hiring. I know, I think in the packet it said, you know, looking to hire about 20 people, with an emphasis on hiring locally. And I know that wasn't really covered in the oral presentation. I'd love to hear a little bit more about how you all are going to be advertising these positions, what type of positions you're hiring for, and how you're going to interact with the local community in making sure those options are available for people.
So we do plan to hold a few job fair opportunities locally within town. We primarily would like to hire within the city of Marlborough. I, I am passionate about being a woman-owned business, and I like to see females being represented in the industry, so females, minorities. We actually support the Veteran Society as well, just with extensive research with cannabis in general. It's something that we're passionate about. So, yeah, our plan would be to hold job fairs within town and, you know, be able to have a diverse hiring process, a diverse team, and, you know, that's part of the excitement for us, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. And can you just speak to the type of positions? I didn't know if I caught that, what type of roles.
Um, I mean, so essentially, I will be, I'm obviously the CEO. I'm planning on being present within the store daily. And we will have general manager, obviously, we'll, we'll have shift managers, security team. So, I mean, it's pretty extensive with how many people will be in, on property every single day. So we're, we're planning on hiring a diverse crowd.
Okay, thank you. Well, definitely, you know, keep in touch with us locally here to make sure those journeys are available.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Councilor Pearlman. Before I get to Councilor Robey, are there any other councilors that have any other questions for the applicant? Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you stated, this is in Urban Affairs, so we will be taking it up when we can set up a timeframe. Attorney Broder, you can probably reach out to our clerical assistant to get a copy of the draft that we've used for all of our other facilities that we've approved. It does give you language within that. We can set conditions. We have set conditions for hours, and take a look at it, present what you want, and then we can look at it further in Urban Affairs. And as was stated, this was at-site plan. I know that they did make a few changes at the beginning of their discussion, and I'm sure that they will finalize. To, I believe, Councilor Tenera's point, if you look at the list of people who were sent the notice for this meeting, I don't believe there were actually any residents. It was all RK Plaza and Walker Realty and businesses within RK Plaza. So that's probably why we're not hearing specific from residents tonight, but maybe as word gets out, there may be some with some concerns. So you can let us know if that happens. So I look forward to seeing you at a future Urban Affairs Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Robey. Are there any other councilors with any questions for these proponents? Any other councilors with any questions? Any other councilors with any questions? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this item is in Urban Affairs. Thank you very much to the applicant.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 to amend Section 33, the results way mixed-use overlay district with a proposed zoning map amendment, Order Number 21-1008216. As with the last public hearing, the pub, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. Public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant; questions from the public; public speaking in opposition; questions from the city councilors; and then I ask the members of the public speaking to please state their name and address for the record. So with that, we'll open with the first part of the public hearing, which is public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant.
Good evening. This is Kevin Sheehan. I'm here on behalf of Greatland Realty Partners. We have an address in Boston at 1 Federal Street. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, Kevin.
Thank you. So we are here tonight to present a zoning proposal that we believe it will be consistent with economic development goals of the city, that will apply to the property known as the campus at Marlborough, which is located at 100 Campus Drive. This is a, the proposal is to expand an overlay, mixed-use overlay district to apply to the property and to make some amendments to that district. And this is the first step in a process that eventually, we hope, you know, will result in adoption of, of this overlay district, along with a, a new development plan and development agreement that will apply to the property and allow us to then develop the remainder of the property in phases over time. And all of this process along the way will be reviewed and approved by the, by the city council. So if you go to the next slide, please. I'll, I'll start with a little bit about Greatland Realty Partners. We are a Boston-based commercial real estate firm. I'm joined tonight by Terry Ford, who is our Director of Development, who is going to give this presentation with me. And we also have our partners present. We have Dave Gillespie is, is joining us here. He's from Avalon Bay, who are partners with us on this project with respect to the residential component. We also have Peter Tam from Gould's Stores, our legal counsel, and Dan Ketches from VHB, our, our civil engineer. And so all of them are here and, and available to respond to questions. And again, from, from the Greatland Realty perspective, we are very happy to be the, you know, relatively new owners of the, the property at the campus. Our corporate philosophy is that we try to be very customer-focused and, and we, so we, we try to acquire and develop properties that appeal to who we, the people that we see as our customer base is really knowledge workers, in whatever form that takes, in terms of, you know, traditional companies or, or technology companies, or, you know, most recently biotech and, and life science companies. And all of these people that, that work at these firms are, are generally, you know, highly skilled and highly educated people that are, you know, we, is, you know, we have a very good employee base here in, in the Boston area for, for all of these types of companies. And, and this property in particular, if you go to the next slide, this, this shows the existing campus. So it's, it's a 120-acre property off Simirano Drive. This is, this is just to the south of, of Route 20, if anyone's familiar with the property. It's a, it's a beautiful property up on a hill. There's, there's great views up there. There's an existing, what you're looking at is a rendering of the existing buildings, which total about 530,000 square feet. These buildings were originally developed as a corporate, the East Coast campus of a technology company called 3Com, which invented the Palm Pilot. And, and they initially developed and occupied the buildings. And since then, they were, they were acquired by Hewlett-Packard, and eventually, they were, they were merged out of existence, but the, the buildings they built remain. They're, they're very high quality, and they today are home to a handful of, of very impressive tenants who, who have been located in Marlborough for a number of years. And just a couple of examples, Hologic is a, is a publicly traded medical device and women's health company that's located here. That's, that's the major tenant. And there's, there's a couple of other tenants located here as well. The, there is a decent amount of vacancy in the existing buildings. And we've, since we acquired the, the property last year, we've been working very hard to lease that vacant space to a new customer. And we are, we are very close to, to leasing all of the vacancy to a, to a confidential user. And so we think that's a very good development to the, for the, for the project and, and for the city. And now we are here tonight focused on the additional, additional development on the site. So if you flip to the next slide. So this, this slide shows a bird's-eye view of the property, and you can, you can see that Ring Road, around, the existing buildings are shown in the middle of the Ring Road in sort of a, a light tan color. And then the additional development is in darker brown buildings and, and the gray parking structures. This shows the, the full build-out of the original campus that was envisioned back in 2005, what included an additional 650,000 square feet. So total, this was 1.2 million square foot campus that was envisioned, of all, all office space, very similar to the existing buildings that, that exist today. So these approvals have been in place for a long time. The, the, but the current economic realities of office space don't support new development at this location. And, and so, again, with our focus on sort of customer focus and, you know, efforts to think about, you know, how do we meet the market? How do we create economic development on this site and, and provide other options to the current plan? We have envisioned a new concept called GMP Building, which is, which is a bio-manufacturing facility. You may have seen some of these other proposals here. We've been doing a lot of work in the market to understand, you know, who are, who are these companies and, and what do they want? And what we've realized is that this location offers a really great opportunity for, for GMP bio-manufacturing facilities. And that's due to the location here in Marlborough, and, and being part of a cooperative municipality, and also having access to infrastructure, and the ability to provide a, a great base of amenities to these workers and, and to be part of the community. So currently, we have introduced our, the initial phase of, the next phase of the development on this property through the site plan review process. We've done an informal filing in, in, that we presented in January to the Site Plan Review Committee. That's the second bullet on this slide, which describes an initial GMP building on the site and a, and a parking structure. And we are currently in the process of, of finalizing our, our formal application to go through the Site Plan Review Process under the existing approvals. And I will mention that initially, this, our first GMP building, we did have a letter of intent to lease it to Revance Therapeutics. And I know that the, the city council is familiar with Revance. Unfortunately, they've informed us that they are on hold with the project at the moment. But we are not on hold. We plan to proceed with the first phase of GMP building, because we know that, you know, there are other similar users that have, you know, similar requirements to, to Revance that will find this, this site and this location, this opportunity, very attractive. So we are going to continue to pursue that through the site plan process. And if you go to the next slide, this is a, now, this is a representation of the, the full vision of the project that we, we call the BioRing here at the campus. And so you can see the existing buildings are the, are the darker buildings in the background, and then the, the BioRing, the new bio-manufacturing buildings are the lighter gray-colored buildings in the foreground. If you go to the next slide, provides a color coding of what's what here. So the orange-colored buildings are the new proposed GMP buildings that would be built in phases. The dark blue buildings in the background are the existing office buildings. And the yellow building in the center is, is partially existing and, and partially to be developed. That's what we envisioned as the town square amenity building for the campus. And then the turquoise in, buildings in the back off to the left are the residential component townhomes. And in, in the way that we've envisioned this project is that all of these components work together. As I said earlier, you know, it's important to attract the... As I said earlier, you know, it's important to attract the, these companies to this particular location in the city. And we think one of the strongest attractors that we have is the ability to create this community within the campus and provide this town square in the center of it, which will have restaurants, a restaurant, a coffee shop, fitness center, really be an expansion of some of the existing amenities that exist on the campus today, but be more outward facing than what it is now. And we also think that the addition of residential is very important to support that business on nights and weekends and again, really create a cohesive community. So, you know, we see a direct link from the residential supporting the retail in the town square, the restaurant, in turn, supporting the development of the BioRing bio manufacturing buildings in the foreground. So I'm going to turn it over to Terry Ford to talk a little bit more about what is GMP and a little bit more detail about our proposal.
Thanks, Kevin. Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Ford. I'm the Director of Development with Greatland Realty Partners. And as Kevin mentioned, we're located at One Federal Street in Boston. So I actually want to stay on this slide for just a minute to talk a little bit more in depth about bio manufacturing. People sort of use bio manufacturing and GMP interchangeably, which is great, but I think there's a lot of confusion about what that actually is and what that means. And so to talk about this project from a holistic view, I think it's important that everyone sort of have an understanding of what we mean when we say bio manufacturing and what this campus would actually look like. So really, the long and the short of it is any sort of GMP or bio manufacturing is just the next step after the research and development part of a life science company. And so really, it's just the commercialization of the science, which means that these companies, by the time they're creating a manufacturing facility, they've had some success at the R and D level or some FDA approval, and they're now moving into the next phase and sort of growing as a company. But I'll just add to that, that the manufacturing piece of this holds the same sort of prestige and buzz that all these other life science companies are getting in Kendall right now. These facilities are highly sophisticated, very clean, highly regulated, and the approval of any one of these companies' drugs is actually based on the facility they are produced in. So the FDA is highly involved in reviewing and approving these facilities. And the interesting thing about bio manufacturing for a community like Marlboro is R and D really needs to stick close to the PhD scientists at MIT and Harvard, which is why you see this concentration in Kendall and Watertown and some of these locations closer to the city. But once they've hit the manufacturing stage and sort of the next phase of the company, it's a little bit more of a repetitive process. And so you see the job opportunities open up from, everything from lab techs all the way up to more managerial roles. And there still are some R and D labs, QA QC labs in these facilities that require the PhD positions. But I would say that there's a wider range of opportunity here from a job creation standpoint. And that's not to mention the construction jobs, the long-term maintenance of the campus that'd be created from a project like this. And then the only other thing I'd add before we sort of move on to talk a little bit more about the amenities is I think there's this natural concern right now about the buzz in the news, especially with the year we've just had around manufacturing, bio manufacturing specifically, and sort of this bubble that the life science industry is in right now. But I'd add that this is a long time coming, that there's very established companies who have been working in the life sciences industry for a long time, Sanofi, Biogen, Pfizer, Bristol Myers Squibb, AbbVie, like very sophisticated, highly built out companies. And when you look at their, there's no aggregated data on this, but I'm presupposing on a lot of this, but if you look at their manufacturing versus R and D lab space on a percentage of the square footage that they've owned or built, it's somewhere between two and three X depending on the company. And so when you think about all of these life science companies down in Kendall that are now looking to grow, this is sort of the next wave of medicine, if they, even if they reach a one to one X of the square footage of R and D that they currently occupy, there is a huge deficit in the market that kind of exists today. And it's a great opportunity when you don't have to be up against the science and you just have to be within driving distance of where it's created for other municipalities to sort of get in on this industry. And then if you want to jump to the next slide. So this is just a closer image of the amenity center on the campus. And as Kevin said, some of this exists today and some of it doesn't. But the way we're envisioning this right now is there's a coffee shop, sort of feeds into this food hall with an event space and a fitness center. And then as you come outwards to sort of the public facing area, you have this restaurant and a beer garden. And then as we envision it, some sort of outdoor activity space as the kind of center quad for the campus. And this is not programmed, but anything from ice skating in the winter to a sport court or, I don't know, bocce, pickleball, you name it, something sort of interesting and interactive. And our expectation is that this amenity center will draw people from the outside in. This isn't meant to only be utilized by the people on the campus, even though they will be big supporters and probably have a regular attendance at the beer garden, like this is meant for everyone to come. And so if you jump to the next slide, we have some precedent images of kind of, this all looks very modern and trendy, but this is sort of how we envision this kind of indoor-outdoor experience. And so you'll see, this is meant for drinks after work. It's meant as like a destination weekend brunch spot, just very contemporary, kind of that indoor-outdoor living meant for everyone to attend. And there's everything from a coffee shop to a beer garden to an outdoor area you could bring kids to, and it's supposed to give everyone a little bit of something. And then on the next slide, I would say all of this sort of detail is to kind of summarize how these uses go together, and Kevin mentioned it, but how they support each other. And I think the real highlight here is the additional commercial development, and we're saying in the form of a BioRing. But that BioRing, the attraction of those tenants to this location is going to rely heavily on the amenity center, as well as competing for tenants within the office space that exists today in the future. And the townhouses really support the creation of that amenity center, which in turn supports the additional commercial development. And one important thing I want to highlight on this slide is in the proposed zoning, we've actually capped the units on site at 100 townhomes. So we won't exceed that 100 number. And the next slide sort of does the same summary. The last was the project, this is the process. And so the city council approval of the zoning map and text is sort of the stage we're currently in. And then we'd move to the approval of the master plan and the development agreement for the overall project. And then as Kevin mentioned, individual components are still going to require site plan approval from the city council. So there'll be an opportunity at each building to get much more granular and sort of technical on exactly how that building is going to interact with both the existing campus and sort of the surrounding area in Marlboro. And I think I would just end by saying that I think our feeling that this proposal is going to be great for the campus, it's going to help it realize sort of the full potential that was originally approved way back in 2005. And it will be a positive for the city from, everything from the amenities to the tax and job creation, and that we're very excited about it and looking forward to working with city council, urban affairs, and the planning board as we keep going.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Kevin. Is there anything else you'd want to add, Kevin?
No, thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the public speaking in favor of the project or the zoning change? Any members of the public speaking in favor of the zoning change? And again, it's star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public on the proposed zoning change? And again, star six to unmute your phone. Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? And again, that's star six to unmute your phone. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Councilor Landers?
I don't know if you want to start with me or not. I'm only going to take a minute or two. But this project, I've watched for years. It goes way back when ThreeCom came in and built those buildings. And by the way, they had the best ribbon cutting I've ever attended. They had shrimp, sirloin tips, and all kinds of good stuff. But the most impressive part, you go up the top floor and you could see Mount Warchusett, which what is about 30 miles west northwest. Location is beautiful. And ThreeCom was very good to us. They gave us a lot of equipment. And then, as we know, they merged with Hewlett Packard. Now I know why, and maybe some of you people will realize, every two years, every December, Mr. President, Public Service Committee would vote to extend the permit for this project would be able to dispose of 50,000 gallons of sewage per day. So that's why we've extended this permit. I think it's always in December every other year. So now this could actually happen that we've kept this permit going, and I think it'd be pretty exciting. I'd just like to hope that when I see some of these projects there, I don't know if we're ever going to get that big restaurant that we want, it'd be nice, but maybe we will. Now, I'm not proposing, Mr. President, maybe more housing per se, but I'm surprised they're only talking about 100 units for something this size. But Avalon, they do a pretty good job, so they probably figure that that would be the right number there for the project. But this could be pretty exciting, because I'd love to ask, but I happen to be in urban, so we can ask there, you know, how long would a project like this take? You don't have to answer it now because we'll be talking about, you know, whether it's three years down the line. But overall, colleagues, I think this looks like an exciting project, you know? I ride around there quite a bit, and I see now where there is about 120 acres there. It's quite a parcel. So that's all I'm going to say. I'll save the rest for urban. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Landers. Councilor Doucette?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just to set the record straight, Palm Corporation was acquired by ThreeCom. But that's because I'm a techno geek. But in any case, I was like 204th Street actually when that building was being built. So, and it's, I can get into stories, but I won't go any further. I do have a couple of questions. First is, specifically you use the term GMP. What does that stand for?
It stands for Good Manufacturing Practices, and it's sort of an industry standard of, you also hear CGMP, which is Current Good Manufacturing Practices. That's an industry standard for how these facilities are both built and maintained to the most current federal standards.
Okay. But, so I'm assuming that you'd probably be doing like a building at a time based upon demand from the market, you know, because you've got about, what, four or five buildings there? And you're specifically focusing on bio, or is it going to be, you know, electronics manufacturing, a mixture of the two? Is it going to be based upon what, how you see the market plays out?
All of that is accurate. I think that we think right now the market is focused in the life sciences industry, and that's sort of where the opportunity is. But medical devices or similar or adjacent uses that have this very clean tech persona, I would say is the target.
Okay, okay. There is some current bio manufacturing in Framingham on California Avenue. I assume you're looking at something like that as far as, you know about that area?
I know a lot about that area. I actually, in a previous company, developed 33 New York App, which is across from the Sanofi campus, which is bio manufacturing today.
Okay, okay. So something like that, you know?
Yep, very similar. Exactly.
Okay, yeah. Okay. But how many square feet per building?
So I will say that the master plan is still being developed bio manufacturing like scale, so I would anticipate between 60 and 100,000 square feet per building.
How many?
And the primary thing there being that bio manufacturing really requires one to two stories. This isn't something you can do vertical. So the buildings probably look larger than they are because they have a pretty decent clear height, but they're only a story or two.
Okay, that's where I was going to go, but thank you for clarifying that. And it seems, at least from the work that we did with Reliance Therapeutics, and thank you for the update on that, but the automation seems to keep the employment base down significantly because there wasn't that many employees actually in that type of company. So, you know, I'm concerned about parking, but also it seems that these buildings are going to be highly automated, so the number of employees may not be great per building, but that still leaves some concern for parking, especially as this, you know, the circle gets fully populated. So that, you know, I'm not sure how that can get addressed, but I think that's something we need to take into account.
I'm happy to comment on the automation if you would like.
Sure, yeah.
So I'd say it's very tenant specific, and a lot of it speaks to how unique their science is. So Revance was an interesting first look into GMP for you guys because they're a little bit more one size fits all from a science perspective versus some of these other tenants, they're developing a therapy that is at a batch basis of going to 10 people or 15 people. And in that situation, it's much more hands-on because the science is quite literally developed on an individual basis. And I would say on the bio manufacturing side, less automation, there is a fair amount of equipment, so it is a less dense use than an office use, which to your comment about parking, it's, if traditional office is three or four per thousand, this is more like two per thousand. So we'd be handling less parking on site.
Okay, okay. That's it for now. Thank you.
Councilor Orem?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions, and I'm sure many of these questions will be addressed in Urban Affairs. I'm glad you're already reviewing some of these matters with our various professionals within the city. First and foremost, it looks great. It's just almost bigger than big, and I'm so glad that you mentioned Marlboro's almost in the heart of the state in respect to highway use as well as all the infrastructure. It's very important, especially sewer and water. A lot of times, that's what's most important to these industries. So I'm very happy to see this proposal. Well, a couple of questions. The first is, the new term now is green premiums, how we're looking at green buildings and the whole concept of, as it relates to climate change and so forth. And hopefully, I would expect this type of modern technology would be looking at green buildings with green premiums so that transportation's also included. But if you can maybe bring some of that to the urban affairs table so I can take, or you can present it before that as well, it'd be nice to see how these buildings are being proposed in that respect, including water, saving water as well as sewer disposal and so forth, and if it's, again, being treated and so forth. The other question I would have is, and it may be premature, but there has been discussion with various city officials as well as our local schools, and we have some great schools within our community, is the interaction of internships to inspire students to go forward into these industries? Might it start at the lab tech right up to the PhD? So I'd be interested in knowing more about maybe other companies that have already started in, say, Natick or Framingham or Boston, and what you're looking to do to promote those type of companies so they're community oriented. those type of companies so they're community-oriented to our students and to our community? Because it looks like you're building a whole new community within our city, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orem. Councilor Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for the really lovely presentation. It was nice to feel like we visited somewhere new in this time where we can't go many places, so thank you very much for that. I have a couple of questions, and maybe these are things to follow up on more than maybe answering right now. But the first is, I'm curious, given the proximity of these proposed housing units to the actual facility, has there been precedent of that being somewhat insular, like people are, you know, very close to where they work, very close to where they would spend recreational time, also where they live, and then that could be kind of cyclical? And I'm just curious if this is, if there are examples of how these types of developments have happened in the past where people who are living in the housing are still able to kind of contribute to the larger city infrastructure rather than being isolated in one area?
Kevin, you want me to try to answer that question? Sure. David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities. We've had a very successful development right across the street from this, the campus. So when Greatland purchased the property, we were very excited to join their team and contribute not only to the campus development, but also build upon the success we've had across the street. We do think that there will be more demand driven to our apartments by the development that's happening on top, but one of the things we're most excited about is really the amenity aspect of this. Greatland's doing a great job, they have a great vision in turning, toward it, an inward-facing amenity to an outward-facing, you know, restaurant and conference spaces that are available, not only to people that work at the campus, but also to the wider community, including Avalon Bay, was really a big selling point for us to wanting to invest more money in Marlborough. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful to know, because I was just curious, it seemed like you could never leave, right? You just kind of keep going around to the different locations, and was hoping that there'd be other opportunities for people to be more integrated into the community. And the other thing I wanted to bring to light, too, I was just curious, you know, given the large presence of this, really, and this is to my fellow councilors, the need for that West Side Fire Station is pretty pivotal right now, and seeing the increase in development, I would be concerned about moving too quickly on this without the fire station also being a priority, given the amount of people and buildings and other services that would be drawn to this particular region. So that's just something that I think we all should be keeping in mind as we move forward, and I'm sure that's something that can be addressed and spoken more in depth about during the Urban Affairs meeting as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Pearlman. Are there any other questions from the councilors? Councilor Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, nice to see you guys again, and now that we met about a month ago. I'm just, we, when we met, we did not discuss Exhibit A, so I'm just curious to see, you're looking for 100 townhomes, but by right, is this correct, that you like to have the right to build 450 based upon the two sub-districts, one and two? Is that accurate, or am I misreading Exhibit A?
Want to clarify that, Peter?
Sure. Mr. President, through you, this is Peter Tan from Goldstein Stores on behalf of Greatland. Accountant Dumas, it is, I understand where your confusion is. It is limited to only 100 townhomes and no more. The proposal that is before you is the extension of the adjoining overlay district, the results-way mixed-use overlay district, to extend upon this site, which is currently in the industrial district. It wouldn't change the underlying zoning, but in doing so, we need to allow, we've suggested amending the text of the overlay district to allow for essentially two master plans, two development agreements. And so the exhibit to the text makes it clear that the existing overlay with its existing master plan that applies to the existing Avalon and the other development is not to be changed, and that for this particular site, no more than 100 townhomes are permitted. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I'll say, Council Dumas? Thank you. Anyone else with any questions? Any other councilors with any questions? Councilor Robey?
My goodness. Mr. President, thank you. I just lost my screen, so I'm not sure if I'm there or not. Thank you. I have some remarks that I had prepared, and I did it not really knowing for sure where tonight would go, but especially for the new councilors, bear with me as I go through a little bit of history. On August 27, 2012, the city council first heard about an interesting project being proposed by Atlantic Marlborough Realty, a company owned by Joe Zink. He had a dream to take approximately 100-acre parcel on Forest Street with empty buildings and not much tax space for the city and turn them and available land into a thriving mixed-use development of housing, retail, and workplaces with close proximity of each other. After a public hearing and much discussion in Urban Affairs on the original request of 15 uses by right, one used by special permit, and four expressly prohibited uses, the code was amended in December of 2012 to create Chapter 650-33 Results Way Mixed Use Overlay District, specifically described as land adjacent to Cimarrano Drive, Forest Street, and Puritan Way and Results Way, thus the name. The next step was the master plan and the development agreement, which was approved in May of 2013. The master plan created four areas: hospitality, commercial, residential, retail, and included a public walking path. The developer then worked with the city to successfully obtain a $1.5 million Massworks grant, contributed $30,000 toward the design of Cimarrano Drive, waived money due to the city in an order of taking of land required to improve Cimarrano Drive, and contributed $150,000 of off-site sewer improvements. They succeeded in getting Quest Diagnostics and GE Healthcare to be tenants on the site and had hotel and housing completed. And in 2018, the developer came for a request to amend the development agreement by asking for additional housing, stating that they had been unsuccessful in finding retail clients and asking for ability to do more housing in hopes that retail would come later. He also indicated that an empty building on the site had a potential tenant. The council agreed to the amendment. There was language added to the development agreement that upon completion of Phase Two, no more multifamily housing of any type would be permitted within this overlay district. As of today, the third building stands empty, and there is no retail. With all that history, why would the council now amend the zoning code to allow a parcel that happens to be located across Cimarrano Drive and is currently zoned industrial to benefit from this overlay? Would it be because in commercial zones, they can't build housing or hotel or motel? Phase Two housing of Results Way is almost complete, and the council approved the green district just to the south of this property. There's another housing development to the north called Talia. The city's currently dealing with the proposed multifamily housing special permit and will at some time in the near future have to deal with legislation passed that requires the council to define a zoning district of reasonable size where multifamily housing is permitted as of right. Is more housing really needed? There are at least six hotels within two miles of the campus. Do we need more hotels? Other than these two items, which require a special permit, many of the uses listed as of right for Results Way are also available as of right to the campus. If they can already build out the parcel further, I question if it really benefits the city by amending this overlay district and giving a new owner of the campus the benefit of the hard work done by Mr. Zink in taking an empty parcel and turning it into one that benefits the city. The past, we're getting, as in the past, we're getting ahead of ourselves today as the only thing before us is the rezoning. I look forward to discussing this first step in Urban Affairs after we hear from the Planning Board, which has their public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Robey. Any other questions or comments from the councilors? Council Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I guess, through you to Council Robey. Would we be able to get written form of those comments, just to kind of know some of that background history?
Mr. President, through you to Council Pearlman, I can certainly provide those.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the councilors? Question or comments from the councilors? Question or comments from the councilors? Seeing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this item is in Urban Affairs. And I'll take a two-minute recess to clear the lines. Thank you to the applicant for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Call the city council back into session at 9:26, and we'll proceed with Agenda Item Number Four.
Communication from Ward One Councilor Laura Wagner regarding a summary of comments related to the application for a special permit to be known as Walcott Heritage Farms at 39 Boston Post Road East for March 8, 2021 City Council Meeting, Order Number 2021-107995J.
Councilor Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilor Navin?
Councilor Navin votes yes.
Councilor Orem?
Councilor Orem votes yes.
Council Robey?
Council Robey votes yes.
Council Dumas?
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Landers?
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Wagner?
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Irish?
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Ducey?
Council Ducey votes yes.
Council Pearlman?
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Tenera?
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Ossing?
Council Ossing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file of correspondence is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant requesting the amount of $25,000 per the legislative mandate in the fiscal 2021 general appropriation to support the installation of security cameras for the fire department.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Wagner?
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Irish?
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Ossing?
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Dumas?
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council, Council Orem?
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Tenera?
Council Tenera votes yes.
Council Robey?
Council Robey votes yes.
Council Pearlman?
Council Pearlman votes yes.
Council Ducey?
Council Ducey votes yes.
Council Landers?
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Navin?
Council Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to approve the grant is approved, eleven in favor and unopposed. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed acceptance of land title from MEDC.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the land title, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the land title. Is there any discussion on the motion? Council Ducey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I understand that this is for the fire station on the west side of the city, possibly. I look forward to it. I hope that more property is taken into account when it's finally built. Not enough yet.
Thank you, Council Ducey. Is there any other? Council Orem?
Thank you, Mr. President. In reading the materials, I just was curious, I know it's a dollar amount, it says $1 within the Massachusetts quitclaim deed. That is just for the actual transfer back to the city? We obviously paid more than, well, MEDC paid more than a dollar, I presume.
You are correct, Councilor. If you recall, for the councilors, as a point of information, back last year, we gave MEDC $440,000 to purchase the property. The property sold for $422,500. And then those realtor guys have to take their cut, and the final price was, they'll be coming back to the city in a future correspondence, is $393,078.47.
Mr. President, I thank you for that excellent summary, and I'm sure all the councilors, including Councilor Tenera, appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilor Tenera?
Thank you, Council Orem. I did not make a dime off that bill on record. And also, as you all know, this is in my ward. I do have residents who are opposed to this, so unfortunately, I'll have to oppose this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tenera. Is there any other discussion? Council Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate us receiving this land title. I am going to, once again, having mentioned it before, advocate that we have this public hearing regarding this possibility of the site as soon as advocate that we have this public hearing regarding this possibility of the site as soon as possible. I think it's long overdue. And so I urge the mayor and us as the City Council to have this set up very quickly. It does seem like, and I know Council Tanara just mentioned it, I've been receiving, you know, some input as well on this. And I want to make sure that residents have a place to have that information available. And it would be really great in future public hearings for them to have video access as well. So if there are any presentations with the visuals, they can follow along. So looking forward to discussing this further. But for anyone watching, just want to also say that nothing has been set in stone regarding the location, but this is a possibility. So just a reminder of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Perlman. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, if I may, Council Orem, I would support the same notice made by Council Perlman. The residents should have their say in this matter. Being a ward councillor in the past, Council Tanara, I seriously understand your concerns and accept the idea that we need to have a hearing with the residents as soon as possible. This is not a final deal, as noted. In fact, you know, it's good to hear the residents. So I'm looking forward to that when that does happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orem. Again, I'll remind the councilors, the property has been carved off and sold. This is not approving a fire station. This is just approving what we said we wanted done back in the fall, which was to buy that parcel from the house. We bought the house. It's now sold. We've now got the money back. And, well, we're going to get the money back. And this is just the deed. There's nothing that's a vote tonight sanctions any fire station. I just want the councilors to be clear. Any other comments or discussion? On the motion to accept the title deed, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes no.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Excuse me, Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Ten in favor, one opposed, sir.
Motion to approve the title deed is approved. Ten in favor, one opposed. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $158,128.90 for the Department of Public Works as requested by Commissioner Deval.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Robie.
You're too fast. Council Robie votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to refer the transfer to the Finance Committee is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding a request for an increase in spending, in the spending limit for the Council on Aging Revolving Fund for fiscal year '21 to $85,000.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Director Pope and her wonderful staff for the last, obviously, for the last year with the COVID. I would not want to see any delay in the very successful curbside lunch program or any reopening programs that are going forward for this year. My motion would to approve the increased spending limit for the Council on Aging Revolving Fund account. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the spending increase on the Council on Aging Revolving Fund from $70,000 to $85,000. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Council Perlman, Mr. President.
Council Perlman.
Mine is more of a comment. I want to, you know, thank Director Pope for this amazing work. And I know it's been, you know, a lot of changing parts moving with the Senior Center. And I was just putting it out there, you know, I don't know if she's on the call or listening or if we could refer, but I'd love to hear. Maybe she could come before the council. I'd love to know a little bit more about what's happening at the Senior Center and how things have been going during COVID. So it might be nice to have an update or in a letter form as well. I think that'd be great. Thank you.
I would offer, Council Perlman, that Director Pope would be more than happy to take your call. And you'd be happy to update you with anything that you want to hear about the good things that are going on down at the Senior Center. But any other comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Council Orem.
Did you hear me, Mr. President?
I did. Council Orem, you have the floor.
Thank you. You broke up. And I, again, it's the technology behind some of this broadcasting. But I wanted just to note, I concur with Council Irish and support this vote.
Thank you, Council Orem. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? On the motion to approve the increase in the revolving fund to $85,000, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to increase the funding revolving fund limit at the Council on Aging from $70,000 to $85,000, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 67 Finance, Section 28, Principal Assessor Powers and Duties of the Code to amend qualifications of the principal assessor along with a proposed updated job description.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee and to advertise, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee and advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to advertise and refer to the Finance Committee is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Ten.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendment to Chapter 19, Boards and Commissions, Article 6, Youth Commission of the Code to amend the Youth Commission.
Council Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to personnel, and I believe we have to advertise, correct? Amendment change?
Um, we would, assuming this one's got markups on it. So we want to advertise once. The other one was kind of all set, but. You are correct. It will have to get advertised.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Department.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. President.
Council Wagner.
Just a note, and when it goes to committee, that on our page 10-3, under appointments and terms of office, the sentences, since you're making changes anyway, it's the mayor shall designate the chairman. And that language, that language needs to be updated to chairperson. I would make that recommendation to consider that, please.
Absolutely. That will be taken up and those changes will be made, Council Wagner. Council Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak on this. I've been in touch with the mayor's office a lot in trying to reactivate the Youth Commission. I think it's extremely important that we have input from young people in the community and have them represented on this board. And we worked with the mayor's office, and I've created a drafted application and tried to get, to see if there was interest. So I'm excited to see this being an initiative from the city, being able to reactivate this group that could provide a lot of value for us moving forward. So I'm excited it's going to the Personnel Committee and look forward to attending the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Perlman. Is there any other, is there any other discussion from the councilors? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to the Personnel Department.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Personnel Committee, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Eleven.
Communication from the mayor regarding OPEB trust update.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the communication from the mayor.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to accept and place on file the correspondence from the mayor, it is accepted and placed on file by a vote of eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed amendment to Chapter 125 Personnel, Section 6, Salary Schedule of the Code relative to the proposed new position of resident drop-off station attendant.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion, motion to advertise a salary ordinance.
Motion made and seconded to advertise a salary ordinance. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Council Orem.
I had asked for information, which I did receive from our new HR director related to comparable communities. And it appears that we're in reasonable line with what other communities pay for this type position. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Orem. Any other comments or questions? On the motion to advertise, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to advertise a salary ordinance is approved. The motion to advertise a salary ordinance is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Thirteen.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding a request for approval of a replacement panel on the freestanding monument sign, Apex Mini Golf at 21 Apex Drive, within the Hospitality and Recreation Mixed Use Overlay District.
Mr. President, Council Robie.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to move this to reports of committees.
Motion made and seconded to move to reports of committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
And Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
On the motion to remove this item, to move this item to reports of committees, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda Item Fourteen.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding the request for approval of two replacement panels on the freestanding monument signs at Apex Kids, 21 Apex Drive, within the Hospitality and Recreation Mixed Use Overlay District.
Mr. President, Council Robie.
Council Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would move to move these to reports of committees.
Motion made and seconded to move this item to reports of committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Landers.
Council Landers votes yes.
Council Dumas.
Council Dumas votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
And Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas.
The motion to refer this item to reports of committees is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda Item Fifteen.
Minutes, Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes for the Boards and Committees, Commissions and Committees. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, I'll be quick. Council Orem.
Council Orem.
First and foremost, thanks to the committees, school committee as well, for getting their minutes out as quick as they do. Just quickly, it was good to see the superintendent on February 23 noted that the COVID-19 cases are coming down more than what was presented in his report. Kudos to the ARC Department for the work they do. And they're doing additional work in our schools for ventilation. So I found that very interesting. Over at the Conservation Commission meeting back in February, the grove is going to be improved. I'm sure the councilors read this. This is more for the general public. My condolences, I'm sure, from all of us to the Wright family. And thanks to Donald Wright for all the work he did for the city, including haying a certain field in Marlborough. And the Trails Committee has been working very hard, as noted in those minutes. And they're going to be creating a website. And that's it for me, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Orem. But again, I would remind councilors, these minutes are not ours. They're ours just to accept and place on file. If you have questions on them, talk to the particular department that put out the minutes. And with all due respect, Council Orem, it's not for us to hit the highlights of these minutes. That's not the purpose. They're in the package for review. Any other discussion on the motion to accept and place on file the minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Council Irish.
Council Irish votes yes.
Council Dusset.
Council Dusset votes yes.
Council Tanara.
Council Tanara votes yes.
Council Ossing.
Council Ossing votes yes.
Council Navin.
Council Navin votes yes.
Council Wagner.
Council Wagner votes yes.
Council Orem.
Council Orem votes yes.
Council Perlman.
Council Perlman votes yes.
Council Robie.
Council Robie votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Seven yes, sir. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Item 16. Claims.
Mr. President.
Counsel Dusset.
Motion to send the claims to the legal department?
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Seven yes. The motion to refer the claims to the legal department is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Reports of committees. Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met March 15, 2021. At 6:30 PM, we had three items on the agenda that evening. First order was number 21-108229. Transfer in the amount of $243,000 from the PEG fund to the IT department to fund various upgrades to equipment and software programs. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair to recommend approval of the transfer. Motion carried 5-0. Next item that evening was order number 21-108212A. Communication from Mayor Vigent together with the request from the Public Works Commissioner Sean DeValle requesting a creation of a new full-time permanent union position entitled Resident Drop-Off Station Attendant, together with job description dated 9/24/2020. The position would report to the Assistant Commissioner of Operations through the Drop-Off Station Foreman. By email dated March 15, 2021, Public Works Commissioner DeValle clarified that the position carries a 40-hour work week, not 35, as initially requested. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair to recommend approval of the job description, carried 5 to 0. Last item that evening was order number 21-108212B. Proposed salary ordinance, Chapter 125 Personnel. Salary schedule to add the position of Resident Drop-Off Station Attendant. Annual salary maximum, sorry, minimum $32,760,000, maximum $37,028.16. Motion by Counsel Tenera, seconded by the Chair to recommend approval of the salary ordinance. The city solicitor will submit, as we saw earlier this evening, a revised salary ordinance for the city council's consideration and advertising as required. Per roll call, motion carried 5-0. The meeting adjourned at 7:17 PM. And as a public announcement, Finance Committee will be meeting on March 29, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Counseler Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee met on March 15. The meeting started at 7:25. All the members of Personnel Committee were present, which include myself, Counsel Landers, and Dusset. Other councilors were in the chamber, and I want to apologize. There was a technical glitch, so those were remote. We could not have access. So, we had one item on the agenda, and that was order number 21-108231. Communication from Mayor Vigent with the appointment of Christine Purple as HR Director for a three-year term. So, those that were remote that could not access, I'll give a little synopsis as to what Christine Purple had said. She addressed the committee stating she formerly worked in Marlborough Personnel Department as a personnel assistant and went to have a successful career in HR in assessing. Notice she lives in Breeze Municipal Government. As she was thinking of getting back into government, she was happy to see the position open here in Marlborough, and her husband is the town administrator in the neighborhood of Town of Southborough. Having said that, it was motion by Counsel Dusset, seconded by myself, the Chair, and recommended for approval, and that was carried 3 to 0, and we motioned to adjourned, 3 to 0, and adjourned at 7:30. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Dumis. Are there any other reports of committees?
Mr. President, Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President, and everybody sit back and relax. This is going to be a long one now. We had a very long meeting with five items on our Wednesday, March 17 agenda. Before I get into them, I do want to thank all of the Urban Affairs Committee members, the department heads, and the applicants. It was a long meeting, as I said, and everyone did an amazing job in getting these taken care of and getting them hopefully off of the Urban Affairs agenda. I will begin with order number 1621106443AAH was a request for approval of a flat wall sign for Apex Mini Golf 21 Apex Drive within the HRMUOD. And order number 1621106443AAI requests for approval of a flat wall sign, Apex Kids, 21 Apex Drive within the HRMUOD. These items were postponed in committee at the March 1 Urban Affairs meeting to gather information on fines that were discussed as having been sent by code enforcement. The Chair opened the meeting stating that discussion would cover both signs, but a separate vote would be taken on each one. The Chair noted all councilors should have received an email from code enforcement stating that no fine had been sent for this site and an email from Attorney Erickson. Chair reviewed some history of code amendment which created 65035 Hospitality and Recreation Mixed-Use Overlay District and the language for the master signage plan that was never provided. Chair also included information regarding a council order approved in 2016 clarifying that the city council had authority in this overlay district for signage, and that two attempts to remove that provision had failed. As the signs are currently in place, but no fines were assessed, the Chair suggested the best outcome would be to approve the signs and use this as a lesson learned for signs in the future. Counsel Landers moved to approve the flat wall sign for the Apex Mini Golf 21 Apex Drive. Chair called the roll, and all members voted yes, and the motion carried. For the... Counsel Landers then moved to approve the flat wall sign for Apex Kids 21 Apex Drive. It was seconded, the Chair called the roll, and all committee members voted yes, and the motion carried 5 to 0. The Chair stated she would ask for a suspension of the rules at this meeting to add the two signs to the agenda for council action. These complement the two related signs that have been moved to reports to have them taken up this evening. And if the rules are suspended, then all of these signs would be taken care of.
Counsel Roby, would you like to do...
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Would you like to do these now so that you can move them along, or do you want to wait till the end?
It's up to you, Mr. President. How do you want to handle this?
To keep the gang engaged? I would rather do them now.
Good to meet you.
They may fall asleep.
Suspensions. I'm going to move to suspend to add these to tonight's agenda.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for both the Apex sign at the Mini Golf and the Kids. Everybody clear on that? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. The motion to suspend the rules for both items is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby, what would you like to do with these items?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve. We can start with the flat wall sign for the Apex Mini Golf.
We'll do...
The first order, order 106443AAH.
Motion made and seconded to approve the flat wall sign at the Mini Golf. Any discussion on the motion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Seven yes, sir. The motion to approve the Mini Golf sign is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve the flat wall sign for Apex Kids, order number 106443AAI.
Motion made and seconded to approve the flat wall sign at the Apex Center for the Kids, order number 6443AAI. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yes. The motion to approve the flat wall sign at the Kids at the Apex Center is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby, do you want to take up agenda items 13 and 14 now?
Yes, that was going to be my suggestion. We can begin with number 13.
Do you want to make a motion?
It doesn't need to be reread again. I would move to approve the approval of a replacement panel on the freestanding monument sign for Apex Mini Golf 21 Apex Drive.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Mini Golf sign, which is the panel out on Route 20, both locations. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. Motion to approve...
I didn't go, Steve.
I apologize, Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes, but I feel forgotten, Steve.
I apologize, Counsel. It's tough when you get older. I can't see anymore at this hour.
Thank you for your patience, Counsel Pearlman. The motion to approve the flat wall, the flat panel signs at the Mini Golf is approved. 11 in favor, none opposed. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the two replacement panels on the freestanding monument signs, Apex Kids, 21 Apex Drive.
Motion made and seconded to approve the panels on the Apex Kids signs. Again, those are both out on Route 20. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to start the roll, and start with Counsel Pearlman, please.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. On the motion to approve the panel signs at the Apex for the Kids, it is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. That was the easy part. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back to the report of Urban Affairs. Our next item taken up was order number 211... I typed that wrong. 108199A. Application for a signed special permit from Serato Signs LLC on behalf of Starbucks, 133 South Holden Street, at the St. Mary's Credit Union site for the operation of an electronic menu board sign. So, the Chair began with discussion of the special permit draft document. Amendments to the draft were agreed to. Number one, change the description on the first photo in Exhibit B to read Starbucks Sample Menu Board rather than Starbucks Proposed Menu Board. Number two, change the second photo to read Proposed LED Sign Location. And three, to amend Condition Two to include and/or the City Council's Urban Affairs Committee after the words "process" before the City Council. Have Legal Department decide if a description of the plans should be added. It was also discussed that Legal would determine if reference to the variance approved by the planning board needs to be included. There was discussion on the need to add signs about loud music, but after input from St. Mary's, it was determined that the signs weren't necessary. Counsel Dusset moved to recommend approval of the signed special permit for an electronic menu board as amended. Chair, the roll. All committee members voted yes, and the motion carried 5 to nothing. I'm asking for a suspension tonight to have this be referred to Legal, to be put in proper form and be placed on the April 5 meeting for council action. I don't know if you want to take this suspension now?
Yep. No, I prefer to do that, keep the engagement going. Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. The motion to suspend the rules is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer this to Legal to be put in proper legal form.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the legal department to put in proper legal forms. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. Motion to refer order 8199A, the Starbucks sign, to Legal to put in proper legal format is approved. 11 in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we took up order number 211008162, an application for a special permit by Attorney Falk on behalf of Speedy Auto Repair Incorporated to relocate an existing auto body shop from 315 Maple Street to 412 418 Maple Street in the Commercial Automotive District with land less than one acre with a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the site, and change of use requires special permit. Preliminary discussion had begun on this item at the February 18 Urban Affairs meeting. The committee reviewed the department head's comments and began amending the draft special permit to incorporate those comments. The order was postponed in committee until the storage units on the site could be further investigated. Attorney Falk began by confirming that the storage units did receive approval for their use back in 2001, but did need to be incorporated into this special permit with a new condition added to the petitioner's draft. The Chair read aloud the latest draft copy of the special permit, beginning with the findings of facts. We talked about number five, where the date of November 23, 21, needed to be changed to November 23, 2020. The conditions were read through to delineate updated changes, and further amendments were agreed to number nine, fencing to add in a sentence that no other outdoor storage is allowed in the fenced area or outside the fenced area, to number 11, to add in a statement that the writer had wanted, would read "paint, solvents, and hazardous materials waste." Any excess paint, solvents, and hazardous materials at the site shall be stored in a secure container provided by a professional waste removal vendor, and the container shall be removed and replaced by the vendor as needed. To add in a condition that the LED sign currently on the south side of the building be removed, and no LED sign would be allowed without a permit from the City Council. And adding in a condition regarding hours to be 8 AM to 6 PM, Monday through Saturday. Attorney Falk was going to add in to make sure that the proposed landscape plan is attached. Counsel Dusset moved to recommend approval of the special permit for Speedy Auto Body as further amended. The Chair called the roll, and all committee members voted yes, and the motion carried 5 to nothing. I'm asking for a suspension again tonight to have this be referred to Legal Department to be put in legal form and placed on the April 5 agenda.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. Just to suspend the rules. Counselor... The clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. The motion to suspend the rules is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Councillor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer the special permit for Speedy Auto Body to legal to be put in proper form.
Motion made and seconded to refer the Speedy Auto special permit to the solicitor to put in proper legal format. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. On the motion to refer the Speedy Auto special permit to the legal department to put in proper format, it is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Councillor Roby.
Thank you. The final item on our agenda was order number 21-1008171, an application for modification of a special permit from Todd Wilson on behalf of Diversified Funding Acquisition LLC Atlantic Property Management to add kitchenettes to existing guest rooms for use as an extended stay hotel and the conversion of a manager's residence to a guest room for a total of 65 rooms at 880 Donald J. Lynch Boulevard. Prior to a meeting, a draft special permit had been sent by the applicant and distributed to department heads for comment. Based on their comments, a revised special permit was provided with a marked-up copy and a clean copy to the committee. Commissioner Polk asked to clarify whether the hotel would have guests staying under 30 days or over 30 days. Although not mentioned in the code, it is in the building... the zoning code, it is in the building code. The applicant will add in a condition clarifying this hotel would allow over 30 days. The chair then went over the changes made to the conditions based on department head comments to make sure that there were no other changes that were needed. The chair also read through all the conditions. Councillor Dusset suggested a further amendment to add at least one into Condition 4E, on-duty employees, reflecting that there would be at least one employee on duty at all times, and a reminder of our executive assistants to add our standard condition regarding recording the special permit. These additional changes would be added to the document. Councillor Dusset moved to recommend approval of the special permit to modify the hotel on Donald J. Lynch Boulevard as amended. The chair called the roll. All committee members voted yes, and the motion carried five to nothing. And again, I'm asking for a suspension to have this be referred to legal to be put in proper legal form.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to... just suspend the rules. Motion made and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Last but not least, Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes. Thanks, Steve.
Eleven yea, sir. The motion to suspend the rules is approved. Councillor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to have the special permit to modify the hotel on Donald J. Lynch Boulevard be referred to the legal department to be put in proper legal form.
Motion made and seconded to refer the special permit for Quality Inn to put in proper legal format by the legal department. Made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. President, should we be naming the hotel here, or should we be naming the address?
Mr. President, I believe it's currently a Quality Inn, but I thought from discussion that it was going to have a name change under the new owner.
Okay. I just don't have the address.
880 Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Eight-eighty?
Yeah.
Eight-eighty. Eight-eighty Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Yes.
On the motion to send the special permit to the legal department, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
And Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. On the motion to refer the special permit to the legal department to put in proper format for the kitchenettes at 880 Donald Lynch Boulevard, that is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Councillor Roby, anything else?
No, but it took me a while to read those, but I'm sure it's going to take the clerk a whole lot longer when he has to read all of the conditions of these three, so I look forward to our next meeting, which will also probably be long. Thank you.
The good advice, the councils are so warned. But no, congratulate, well done by the Urban Affairs Chair and the committee members to get through all that. That was a lot of work, so thank you very much. Any other reports of committee before we move on? Hearing none, we will start with Agenda Item 17.
Order that the Human Services Committee hold a public meeting to allow the Marlboro Hospital leadership to present additional details regarding the Mass General Brigham proposed expansion submitted by Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer to Human Services.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Human Services Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. On the motion to refer the order to the Human Services Committee is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 17.
Order number 20-100-7959, that the City Council approved the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Financial Review recommendation for adopting an abbreviated budget authorization format for all departments for future city budgets, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of committee is to approve.
Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Recommendation of committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. The motion to approve the abbreviated budget for future budgets is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 19.
Order number 21-100-8185, transfer request in the amount of $579,275.76 from undesignated fund to miscellaneous mitigation account to be used to finish mitigation costs related to trench repairs noted by City Engineer Thomas Di Perseo. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the committee, which is to approve the transfer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. The motion to approve the transfer is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 20.
Order number 21-100-8202, transfer request in the amount of $370,000 from PEG to Cable Trust to fund the FY '22 budget for WMCT TV.
Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. On the motion to approve the transfer, it is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 21.
Order number 21-100-8206, the transfer request in the amount of $10,400,000, which moves funds from Ballparks and Fields Capital and undesignated fund to various accounts as outlined on the transfer sheet, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councillor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be abstaining from this vote due to a potential conflict of interest.
Let the record reflect that Councillor Wagner will be abstaining from participating in the vote on this item. Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of committee is to approve the transfer.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Wagner abstains. Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Ten in favor, one abstention, sir. On the motion to approve the transfer, it is approved, ten in favor with one abstention. Agenda item number 22.
Order number 21-100-8207, transfer request in the amount of $1,250,101 from the meals tax revenue account to fund the FY '21 bond payments associated with Parks and Recreation improvements, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of committee is to approve the transfer.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Landers.
Councillor Landis votes yes.
Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Irish.
Councillor Irish votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Aussing.
Councillor Aussing votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yea, sir. On the motion to approve the transfer, it is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 23.
Order number 21-100-8208, transfer request in the amount of $459,600, which moves funds from and to various accounts within the Department of Public Works to fund equipment for the Eastally wastewater treatment plant, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councillor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of committee is to approve the transfer.
Motion is... Motion is made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Councillor Wagner.
Councillor Wagner votes yes.
Councillor Roby.
Councillor Roby votes yes.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset.
Councillor Dusset votes yes.
Councillor Navin.
Councillor Navin votes yes.
Councillor Pearlman.
Councillor Pearlman votes yes.
Councillor Dumas.
Councillor Dumas votes yes.
Councillor Tenera.
Councillor Tenera votes yes.
Councillor Oram.
Councillor Oram votes yes.
Councillor Landers.